I'd like to call the May, PCOSON City School Board Meeting to order. And Marissa?
Savannah Monroe, an 8th grader at PCOSON Middle School, will lead the pledge tonight. Savannah is a member of the Girls Ensemble, the Art Club, and the National Junior Honor Society. She plays JV soccer and volleyball and loves hanging out with her friends. Her goals for high school are to make the varsity soccer team and graduate with an Advanced Studies diploma and then get accepted into Virginia Tech.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
McKenna Phillips, a 7th grader at the middle school, will provide the inspirational reading tonight. She's a member of the Girls Ensemble and enjoys reading, singing, playing the clarinet, shopping, playing board games, babysitting, and just being with her friends. Her goal for high school is to remain in all honored classes with a high GPA.
"Though I am young and cannot tell," by Ben Johnson. Though I am young and cannot tell either what death or love is well, yet I have heard they both bear darts and both do aim at human hearts. And then again I have been told, love wounds with heat as death with cold, so that I fear they do but bring extremes to touch and mean one thing. As in a ruin we at call, one thing to be blown up or fall, or to our end like we may have by a flash of lightning or a wave. So love's inflame shafted brand may kill as soon as death's cold hand, except love's fires the virtue have to frighten frost out of the grave.
Thank you very much. Next up is our student presentation for tonight. And tonight we had PCOSON Middle School Girls Ensemble singing "On My Own," "On My Own" from Les Misérables. And the students are led by Ms. Terry Everly, music teacher at PCOSON Middle School. Ms. Everly?
(plays piano) 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 (plays piano)
That was very, very well done. Thank you very much for sharing that with us.
Hey! What night?
June 5th.
June 5th?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Have fun.
Let's see. Sorry, I was caught up in the moment. I lost my place. We are at additions and/or modifications to the agenda. Do we have any?
We have none this evening.
Thank you. We'll move into recognitions. And students, after the...if you'll sit through the recognitions, we'd like to...we're gonna take a short recess so the board members can come around and speak with each of you. First up, from Virginia Municipal League, will be Pete Strickler. Mr. Strickler?
Good evening, Chairman Carter, School Board, and Dr. Parrish. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Had I known this was gonna be televised, I'm sure VML could've sent someone much, much better looking than me, but somehow we'll get through it. Tonight I'm here to present an award to PCOSON City Schools for Risk Management. As a little bit of a background, in 2010, VML insurance programs began a fleet safety campaign to address one of our overriding claim sources, and that was automobile losses. At the time this program started, our loss ratio for automobile liability was around 86 percent. In the time since this program has started, it has dropped to 48 percent. So hopefully this will be a continued success for PCOSON City Schools, as you guys have been a part of this program since January 31st of 2013. A little bit of a background about the program. We have 55 members throughout the state consisting of cities, towns, counties, schools, and various authorities. They have 158 instructor trainers, and they have trained over 23,000 drivers to date. Though every member that has participated in this program has met the goals, it's by no means an easy task. In return for participating in this program, members agree to train 90 percent of their drivers the first year, 50 percent every year after that. In addition, they must have a annual Department of Motor Vehicle Records check conducted on all their drivers, have a driver selection and retention program in place, have and enforce a vehicle use policy. The reward for this accomplishment is that every member that completes these goals receives 5 percent of their auto liability. So as you can see, it's no easy task to get to where we're at tonight, and that is where I'm here to present an award on behalf of VML to Steve Pappas, Executive Director of Operations, in recognition of their efforts and as a thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strickler. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Parrish.
Yes, as Dr. Carter makes his way to the podium, I'm excited to recognize this evening the success of our Odyssey of the Mine teams. Three of PCOSON City Schools' OM teams did a great job at the State OM competition. All three teams competed in the structure problem. Each team had to design and build a structure made up of components stacked on top of each other, then test the amount of weight the structure would hold. The team also had to create and perform a skit that included an artistic representation of earth, which integrated the structure's components. All of our teams were coached by Mr. Norman Remchuck. What I'd ask is we'll start with the elementary school team for Division 1. If the following team members would come forward: Brody Weston, Mallory Wright, Sidney Baggett, Eleanor Patterson, Ashley McKenna, Olivia DeNona, and George Slyman. This elementary school team came in 3rd place in the Division 1 level of the competition. Their structure held 227 pounds, and they did a terrific job in their performance. Please join me in congratulating this team on their success at the State. All right, next we're gonna recognize our middle school team. I must say, it's very exciting to have this many students here with us this evening. It's a great problem to have. If the following students would come forward, please. and Charlotte Patterson. The middle school team placed 1st in Division 2 level of the state competition. They had a great performance, and their structure held 597 pounds, their personal best for the year and the highest weight held at the tournament. This team will be moving forward onto the world competition that will be held at Iowa State University later this month, and we wish this team all the best of luck in that competition. Please join me in congratulating our middle school team on placing first.
What a nice problem to have.
Next, we'll recognize our high school team. The following students will please join Dr. Carter up front. Molly Arms, Belle Kelly, Justin Baez, Ingrid Steinhow, Eden Fulingham. I know that Cam Ross is not able to be with us, I believe he's in a baseball game, and there's Cadence Soika here. We'll make sure that we get our certificate to her. The high school's Division 3 team put on a compelling performance on the serious issue of bowling. Both the audience and the judges were moved by their skit and its message. Their structure held 412 pounds, the highest weight held for a high school team. They too came in 1st place and will be competing in the world's finals at Iowa State. I do wanna say, if there are people out there who have not been to an OM competition, if you see the structures that they build and then see how much it means to have 412 pounds on the structure, it really is incredible. So just wanted to let those that aren't OM fans aware of the accomplishment that our three teams have made here. But please, at this time, join me in congratulating our high school team on its success and wish them best of luck. And we do not have a certificate for him this evening. We recognized him last year, but I do wanna ask our coach, Norman Remchuck, to come forward. He does so much with our team. If all of our OM students could just stand, we wanted to try and get one picture of all them, hence the reason we kept you up there.
With the coach!
With the coach!
(laughing) 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 So again, one final time, please join me in congratulating our very successful OMers.
I am gonna ask that our OMers have a seat back in the audience. We need to do one more recognition, and then we'll take that intermission that we promised. I'd like to call up our four principals at this time for a recognition that we received as a division and one of our schools received as a school. If Mr. Wright from our high school could come forward, Mr. Pirelli from our middle school, Dr. Wood from our elementary school, and Mrs. Harper from our primary school. PCOSON City Public Schools was selected to receive a 2014 Virginia Index of Performance Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. The division received this distinguished award for meeting federal pass rate targets and graduation rates, and for making progress toward educational goals established by the Board of Education and the governor. In addition, the division earned at least 75 VIP points, which included bonus points in each content area. PCPS was one of only three school divisions recognized with this award. Additionally, PCOSON High School received the same award as a school. Please join me in congratulating the administrators, faculty, and staff at all of our schools for receiving this very important recognition from the state.
Okay, this time, we're gonna take a short break and mingle a little bit with you guys. Thank you. (laughing) 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 (laughing)
Harmony in that thing. I mean, unison was good. When I got to the harmony part, I'm like, oh.
Everyone's missing out.
Oh, one, but.
That's what I asked.
Everything is happening.
Wait until we get his PowerPoint up.
Oh, yeah.
Did everybody get?
No. It's like we go from one of the most packed houses we had to.
Okay, next we'll go into presentations and reports. And first up is financial update with Mr. Bowen.
That's a hard act to follow, too.
Yes, it is. I wish I had as good news as those children had. Good evening, Dr. Carter, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance update this evening, I'd like to begin with a budget update. As you know, the General Assembly remains deadlocked. And since no budget has been passed, the PCPS budget is still based on Governor McDonald's budget. We do not anticipate that the General Assembly will make any significant budget changes once a budget is adopted. However, if changes do occur, a revised budget will be brought before the Board for approval. Staff is currently working to determine the potential impacts to operations should the state fail to pass a budget by July 1 and potentially shut down. In the area of local funding, just last week, Pecoson City Council approved a budget that provides PCPS with an additional $450,000 that the Board had requested. These funds are coming from a tax increase, so they will be ongoing in future years. And I'll say, this is the first budget in my six years that PCPS has not had a budget cut. And this is because City Council and other city officials continue to provide much-needed support. But as you know, they cannot completely fill the budget reductions passed by our state-elected officials. So more work needs to be done with our state officials to restore these state funds. And finally, staff will be presenting a budget change to the Board at the June meeting. As you know, school divisions and localities have had a mandate to push the 5% employer VRS, employee VRS share to the employees. This process began in 2012, and at that time, we had an option to either push this all at one time or to phase it in. And with the considerable budget cuts that we were facing in FY '13, PCPS elected to do the phase-in process. As the law required, for each percentage of the VRS share that you pushed to the employee, the employer had to provide an equal percentage in a raise. Now, through this transition, not only was it costing the school division money, it was also costing the employee money. So in order to hold the employee harmless, so they'd have no net loss in their pay, we were providing the employee with an additional 0.2% for each percentage that we were providing them. Now, just last week, and our current approved budget actually pushes 1.2%, or pushes an additional 1% to the employees for FY '15. Now, last week, VRS changed the rate that PCPS has to pay on behalf of its nonprofessional employees. This reduction in rate is actually saving the school division $15,000 for next year. Our professional, our nonprofessional employees, this is our smallest group, it's about 29 employees, includes our bus drivers, our food service custodians, and our maintenance employees. In addition, a couple of retirements have been announced since the approval of our budget, which will also provide us with additional savings. So combined, these savings will allow PCPS to complete the switch of the employee share of VRS by doing 2.4% for FY '15 instead of the 1.2 that's currently in the budget. This change will help keep PCPS more competitive with other school divisions and will also reduce staff work. And that's my report this evening.
Does anybody have questions or?
Excuse me.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Next up is operations update with Mr. Papas.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, School Board, Dr. Parrish. This evening's operations report, we'll start out talking a little bit about food service and the history associated with how we got to where we are today and the contract of outsourcing. We outsourced food service in 2004. We needed the expertise of someone to help us be consistent across the Board of the four schools. They were able, and we put out an RFP at that point, Aramark received that, and they had been and have been our contract provider for school lunches and breakfast since 2004. At the time that we did that, all of our employees stayed with us, and only through attrition were they replaced with Aramark employees. Today, we have three of our employees still left with us. And since we've been with them, they rapidly brought us to a break-even, and we were able to continue that process until just recently, and we have some plans in place to get us Food service requirements. Part and parcel of what helps make an outsourced food service contractor valuable to us is the myriad of regulations that we need to comply with. We've spoken of many of them in the past. As members of the National School Lunch Program, we have USDA guidelines that we have to go with. We have commodities. All of those come with a plethora of requirements that we have to meet. The VDOE, the Virginia Department of Education's Nutrition Services Department oversees much of what we do, and we have both federal oversight and state oversight. We get federally reviewed once every three years, and then in-between years, the state comes down and reviews us from top to bottom. So it's time again. We had our initial outsource in 2004 that lasted for five years, and 2009, we put out an RFP. Aramark received that then, and again, we just put out an RFP. Aramark submitted a proposal, and they were selected. What we've done now is we've got a one-year contract with four one-year options to renew. And that's the same as we've had in the past. Part and parcel of what they offer going forward is continued break-even, so we'll be in a hold-harmless situation from our operating budget for the schools. They've reduced their fees by three cents per meal, and they're going to upfront provide $8,000 in marketing to help reinvigorate our program. And that's how we get to where we are today relative to our food services contract and being outsourced. Later in your agenda, you'll be asked in the reading file to allow the superintendent to enter into that agreement. In the area of transportation, reported in the past that we work closely with York County and we participate in their rodeo, spelled R-O-A-D hyphen E-O, where our bus drivers, some voluntarily and others that I've requested participate, go to York County and with their crew, there were 44 of us, I believe, this year, drivers taking a road skills test. This is a written exam at the onset and then an obstacle course. This obstacle course, I can assure you, is not fun, and I was one of the judges. It really puts a driver's skills to the test. And the whole purpose of that is to make drivers better and safer as they continue to provide the key ingredient in their job, which is student safety for transportation. And that culminates my report for the evening.
Any questions, comments there? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sidner.
Mr. Papas, how many responders did you get to the food service RFP?
Yeah. We, there are three big players, Aramark, Sodexo, Chartwells. Each of them were invited by me. Only Aramark responded.
And do you think it's just because of our size?
It's our size. The Sodexo folks called me and said, look, you know, great RFP, all however many pages, but it's just not something that we're willing to do at this point. One of the things that we had was a hold harmless. We could not, we cannot absorb anything in our operating budget, and Aramark was willing to do that. That's big for us.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
About facilities?
Yeah.
I noticed some large numbers affixed to the primary school. Is that to just identify entrances?
Yes. You may recall, as part of our annual safety audit and review and our crisis management plan, one of the things that we came up with, working with our local safety agencies and national organizations, is that this is a good thing to do over every door. It helps the fire department and other first responders know where they are. They all have instant communication. So with the push of one button, if you had someone who needed assistance at door number seven, then everyone would know where that was. You wouldn't have to know our buildings, and you could easily assist someone.
Excellent. Thank you.
And we actually worked with the Pecoson Police Department and our fire department to, for them to tell us what was the best numbering system to use on the buildings, because they are the ones that are apt to use those numbers. And so they were very helpful.
They're very prominent. Very good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Papas, I've been reading in the news about there's a push to provide a waiver of the federal guidelines for the lunches, for, I guess, the school systems who are losing money each year. Have we heard anything about that here in Virginia? Do you know?
Yeah, it's something that's on the table. There was actually an adjustment made this school year that we're just finishing now that was a big help to us.
Okay.
And we're hoping that those will continue. But Aramark's on top of that, and so is the VDOE. They'll let us know. I have a meeting next week with them.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. And next up is Ms. Colley with the instructional update.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Carter, members of the Board, Dr. Parrish. This evening, my instructional update focuses on finishing our school year strong, particularly regarding student achievement. As we've mentioned so often, we certainly value the achievement results we see when we look at the standardized tests our students take. And this spring, our primary school students have participated in the phonological awareness-literacy screening, better known as PALS, to ensure they have the needed reading skills to be successful. Our students in grades three through 12 are currently taking their SOL tests to measure content mastery. Our secondary students are also, have already taken their advanced placement exams and will be taking career and tech ed credentialing exams this spring. And all of these tests represent ways we measure the achievement of our students. We also recognize achievement within our schools. Our school board meetings are great examples of this, where we capture different student achievement each month, like our wonderful middle school chorus entertained us tonight, and through our presentations like Odyssey of the Mine and looking at the creativity of our students. Our schools are also recognizing students for their hard work throughout the year. At the primary school, they've been busy recognizing math wizards all year as students master their basic math facts and getting ready for higher-level math beyond those facts. The elementary school presents awards each quarter during the school year. These awards include honor roll, those students who show the most improvement, students who are examples of what it means to be a good friend and not a bully. This year, PES is also adding the Presidential Awards for Educational Excellence, excuse me, and Achievement for Qualifying Fifth Grade Students at the end of the year. Pecoson Middle School recognizes students every month of the year. These students demonstrate achievement through academic effort, through their attitude, citizenship, service to the community, and attendance. These efforts are rewarded with a special in-school reception that's sponsored by the middle school PTO. Pecoson High School recently inducted students into the National Honor Society. In the coming weeks, they will recognize honor graduates and hold departmental honor society programs. The Pecoson High School Band, Chorus, and Athletics will honor students for their achievements as well in the coming weeks. We are very proud of the hard work our students and teaching staff put into educating our students, and I know that you're going to join me over the next weeks when you see our students and congratulating them on all of their many accomplishments this year. It has definitely been another year of excellence for our Pecoson City Public Schools students, and thank you. It's fun to share the positive stuff, and I appreciate the opportunity to share those awards and achievements with you tonight.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Colley. My apologies before. All right, Mr. Cass, could you take us through the consent agenda, please?
Yes, the consent agenda tonight includes four items, all enclosed in our packets: approval of financial reports, approval of personnel action, authorization for PHS to apply for membership with the Virginia High School League for school year 2014-15, and authorization to accept and expend funds in accordance with the request.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And Dr. Colley, could you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries, vote six to zero.
Thank you. And other matters for consideration, first up is consideration of approval of minutes of the April regular meeting and work session, which was enclosed. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes at the regular meeting and the work session?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And Dr. Colley, could you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Abstain.
The motion carries the vote five, yes to one abstention.
Thank you. And while we're on that, Mr. Cass, thank you very much for taking over, and I heard the meeting ran very smoothly last month, so I appreciate you filling in for me. Next up, consideration of authorization for superintendent to sign the Virginia Municipal League member agreement. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, as we saw tonight, we had a visitor from the Virginia Municipal League. That is where we do get our insurance from, so this allows us to continue on with that insurance agreement, and it does cover insurance for all of the school division activities, which are numerous. So important that we have an insurance policy, and you had information in your reading file and an attachment about the insurance rate. So with that said, I recommend approval of the authorization for me to sign the Virginia Municipal League member agreement.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Does anybody have questions or comments there? Okay, thank you, Dr. Colley. Could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion, vote carries, six to zero.
Thank you. Next up, consideration of approval of the resolution of VRS board-certified rates for nonprofessional employees. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, as Mr. Bowen mentioned in his presentation, we did receive the final rates for the nonprofessional employee group. Fortunately, we did see a slight reduction, which is going to help us offset the change that we will make in the budget. So with that said, I recommend approval of the resolution of VRS board-certified rates for nonprofessional employees. You need to adopt a resolution in order for us to implement those rates.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions there about that or comments? And that's $15,000, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, that's awesome. Anybody?
Good work.
Dr. Colley, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Resolution passes, six to zero.
Next, consideration of approval, superintendent to sign the contract for Aramark to provide food service for Pecoson City Public Schools for 2014 through 2015, and there was a reading file enclosed. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions there, comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Papas, for your continued work on with our food services. Dr. Colley, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Vote passes, six to zero.
Thank you. And last consideration of, excuse me, consideration of first reading of modification to policy manual, section 5-7, employee pay and fringe benefits with the reading file. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, what you have in front of you is a policy that we've had to make changes to for a couple of reasons. One, we've got the addition of a policy regarding disability leave. We've added that because the Virginia retirement system, hybrid employees are covered now under the Virginia Local Disability Program. Also, VRS Plan 1, Plan 2, and hybrid employees' leave accumulation limits are outlined in the appropriate places in the revised policy, and it ties to the changes that VRS have made for some of the different plans that they have. Another change in here has actually come out of a request from teachers in a meeting that I have regularly with a group of teachers, and that is to allow teachers to carry over three days of personal leave each year. They asked that they're be able to do that rather than only being able to carry over two days of personal leave. They recognize they were not asking to use more than five personal leave days in a year, which is a week, which means if they do do that, we do lose the teacher actually instruction in that class for a week. But if they could carry over three, it would mean that if they did use five one year, they had an extra one moving into the next year. So during this time, when especially this year, we've just been unable to provide additional compensation, they are very appreciative of the fact that we're able to offer this to them, because it could help them in a year if they needed that, have that one extra that they could carry forward. So it is a change that we are recommending in the policy here. And then finally, you do see some changes just in language clarification and also making sure we're consistent with our terminology throughout that policy. So you have the policy now. This is first reading, so I'm recommending that you move it forward to second reading, which means you'll see it again in your June meeting, and then at that time, you will vote on it. Know that in your June meeting, you're also going to see a lot of policies that are changing as a result of the work of the General Assembly, but because this impacts employees that we will hire as of July 1, the people that will be on the new VRS plan, we needed to have you vote on this prior to the start of July 1, so we separated this from what you're going to have when you see a first reading in June on a number of other policies.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of the modification to policy manual, section 5, 7?
So moved.
To either.
And a second?
I'll go with the second.
Okay, great. Thank you. Questions there about that?
I have one question. What are the policies of other surrounding school systems, are they similar with the sick leave?
They're similar, although we are doing things a little differently from some of the other divisions. I'll bring Mr. Bowen up, because he's talked to some other finance directors about how they're handling that.
Thank you.
As far as the leave that's earned, we are in line with other school divisions. We don't provide the highest amount of sick leave or unified leave, but we certainly don't provide the least. So we are in line with other school divisions in that regard.
And we do, when we, if employees are employed in another school division in Virginia and then come to us, they are able to carry that sick leave forward to us. So if we hired somebody from somewhere else to teach with us this year, if they had sick leave, that's brought forward. If you're a 12-month employee and have annual leave, that is not carried over with you, but school divisions honor the transfer of sick leave throughout the state.
And it is accrued?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a cap on the sick leave that you can, do you know?
For our non-hybrid employees, there's no cap on the amount of leave that you can earn. With our hybrid employees, because they're covered under a new, this new Virginia Local Disability Program, we have capped their leave. So the most that they can carry over in one year is 60 days. So they'll earn a new allotment in the next year, and then, but the most they can ever carry over is 60 days, because they have access to this whole new state program that as Plan 1 and Plan 2 employees, VRS employees don't have access to.
Okay. I believe you answered that question before.
Yeah.
Just remembered, sorry to ask it again.
It's okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Let's see, I guess we need a vote. Dr. Colley, could you call for a vote, please?
Sure. Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
All right, then, the revisions move to second reading by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. And do we have any public comment tonight?
There is none.
Thank you. And Dr. Parrish, could you kick off our communications, please?
Yeah, I just want to, once again, I've done it in person, but as Mr. Bowen showed in the presentation, City Council and our city manager were incredibly supportive of our schools this year. They made decisions that enabled us to have our $450,000 shortfall filled, and that will be ongoing, which will help us as we move into the following fiscal year. By doing that, that means we have no position cuts, we're not having to lay off employees, and we can maintain our instructional programs as we have them this year. And as Mr. Bowen said, since we both came together, came the same year, it's the first time in six years that I'm not bringing to you final budget cuts, and I really cannot thank our City Council members, our city manager, and ultimately, our citizens for their support of the school, because I know that this is coming through a part of that tax increase. But we're very fortunate to live in a community that's so supportive of its schools and willing to fill that gap for us that really has been created by the state. Certainly, you'll hear me talking about that as we move back into the fall. We've really got to get those state legislators and other elected officials to try and fill. We've really got to get those state legislators and other elected officials to try and fill what's already been reduced, but at least we're in better stead moving into next year than we've been in quite a while. Also, I, in linking to what Dr. Colley said, we are in the midst of a lot of testing and a lot of end-of-year activities, lots of evening events. So I just say to our students out there, stay focused, because the end of the school year is not here yet, and there's a lot more student achievement to occur between now and the end of the school year. And a big thank you to our administrators, our teachers, our staff, because it is a busy time of the year and can be rather exhausting for those working out there in the schools and elsewhere, so I thank them for what they're doing. And we will not be together again in here for a formal board meeting until after our graduation. So on June 14th, we will graduate our next class of seniors, which is always very exciting. Those are my comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Marissa?
Sure. Good evening. I'd like to start off by saying what a pleasure it was to volunteer at the Pecosin Primary School Carnival last week. The carnival took place on Friday, May 16th, and a total of over 300 children came to the event along with their families and community members. The kids enjoyed playing carnival games, face painting, bouncing around in the bounce house, and eating Chick-fil-A. Pecosin Elementary School held their annual family math night. Students and family members participated together as they rotated between creative math activities at the event. SOL testing has begun and will continue through June 5th. Make sure you get plenty of rest and make sure you eat a good breakfast. The Pecosin Middle School has also kicked off their SOL testing. They, make sure you get a study, get good night's sleep, eat breakfast, and take your time on the test. It's very important. The Spring Choral Concert is Thursday, June 5th. Good luck to the Pecosin Middle School Odyssey of the Mind team in the world final, May 28th through 31st at Iowa State University. The high school has many events coming up. May 22nd will be the Spring Choral Concert at Grafton High School at 7:00 PM. May 26th, all Pecosin schools will be closed due to Memorial Day. May 31st is junior and senior prom from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM. After prom will be held from 11:30 till 5:00 AM. June 4th, PHS will be holding, be conducting the senior scholarships and award programs at 7:00 PM. On June 6th, will be senior English and Gov. exams and at seven, from 7:20 AM until 10:40 AM. The senior picnic will also be held this day from 11:00 to 2:00 PM. June 8th will be the senior bachelorette service at the Pecosin Baptist Church at 6:00 PM. June 9th, Period One exams will be held for the high school. This will all be a full day. On June 10th, Period Two exams will be held at the high school, and this will also be a full day at school. Scholarships and awards for ninth through 11th graders will follow the conclusion of the second-period exams. June 11th will be the third-period and fourth-period exams, and students will be dismissed at 10:40. June 12th, or fifth and sixth-period exams, and students will also be dismissed at 10:40. On June 13th are the seventh-period exams and makeup exams for students. Senior graduation rehearsals will be on June 13th from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. June 14th, at 11 o'clock at Bethel Temple, will be the graduation for the seniors. Congratulations to all the seniors this year. I know they've worked hard, and my sister's one of them, so I want to congratulate her, and it's going to be sad to see her go, but I'm excited for her.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Dr. Colley. No comment tonight.
Ms. Whitaker?
No comments.
Ms. Sidner?
I would like to thank city council also for their support. That's excellent, for filling in for where the state has not, so I just wanted to thank them. And to thank all our wonderful singers that came out earlier. That was quite enjoyable. And also, I'd like to congratulate Marissa for her National Honor Society induction that I was at, and noticed she was there as well, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Melton?
A couple of things. I enjoyed the Thomas Nelson Community College graduation last Thursday night, and I will say to the parents out there, that community colleges are still some of your best value in educational dollars. A lot of tying agreements and a lot of ways you can get to the big four-year colleges straight out of community colleges, particularly with the dual enrollment courses right here in Pecosin. So always look at those things, you get a head start on college. I think since the last time we met, I attended the last special advisory committee meeting. Of course, that's open to all parents of special needs students. I'd like to thank Doris Feltman and the chair. The meetings this year have been well organized, well-run, and presented very nicely, so parents, you should take advantage of that opportunity. And I'd like to echo the same thing about Mayor Hunt and Buddy Green and our city manager and city council. I don't want folks at home to think the $450,000 is extra dollars. These dollars are very well needed and will be put to good use. This is not extra money. This is what we need to operate the school systems. So thank you, Mayor Hunt, Buddy Green, city council.
Mr. Cass?
I really enjoyed the performance tonight from the Pecosin Middle School Girls Ensemble, and in fact, I've noted June 5th on my calendar that I'd really like to go out and hear them that night. Congratulations to all the Odyssey of the Mind. It's amazing the amount of time and work that they put into that. And I'd also like to comment, tonight, we heard the term, and it's a job classification as non-professional, and I want those folks to know that we believe that they're very professional. It's just a job classification, and it doesn't reflect the incredible professionalism that they show in doing their jobs, our drivers and other people. And also, I'd like to personally thank the city council. It's amazing the support that they give us and give the schools in supporting our children's education. I sit on numerous boards, and this is the only board that didn't have cuts to deal with this year, and I'm glad to be on at least one that was in that situation, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Likewise, I would like to thank city council and also the community for just supporting a tax increase to fund the schools. So like Mr. Melton said, that's money that we really needed to maintain quality education. And that support comes from a long history of having quality education here in Pecosin City Schools, and it's the teamwork of the bus drivers you talked about, the food service workers, personnel at the, at school office, the teacher assistants, the secretaries, all the teachers in the classroom, and the parents. So that's, together, we make this great, and I really appreciate city council helping us to stop the bleeding, so to speak. It's very much appreciative, appreciated, and very much needed. The course tonight was fabulous. I got the opportunity to go with them also to King's Dominion this past Saturday, and with the exception of the bus ride up and the bus ride back, it was amazing, because what you heard and hear while, before we were on camera, multiply that by about five, and that's what I heard in the bus, and with a governor on it. It's got to have a governor on it. That thing wouldn't go more than 55 miles an hour, I know. But anyway, it was an amazing, it was an amazing day. The weather was beautiful, and I thank you, Ms. Everly, for having me, and the kids were awesome. No issues at all. It was the best group of middle schoolers that I have ever chaperoned anywhere. I mean, it was great. We had a good time. We rode everything, and it was just a great day all around, so thank you for that opportunity, Ms. Everly. Also, had the chance to go to the PTO fundraiser and art show at the, at the middle school, and the art on the wall was absolutely phenomenal. Some of that was just, we have some incredibly talented students, so thanks to all the art teachers out there for what you do. And don't forget that the community food drive is going on at schools tomorrow and